Call to order the council meeting of Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. Order to have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call, please?
Rebecca Smith?
Here.
Rashad Bates?
Here.
Tiffany Henley?
Here.
Dustin Queenen?
Here.
Lauren Hughes?
Here.
Heather Lewis?
Thomas LaPera?
Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. We did not have an executive session tonight, so we'll move right into presentations and a presentation by Pamela Martin, founder and executive director of Expressive Path.
My open her.
You can stand up in the middle if you want.
That's okay. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yep, perfect. Hi, thank you for having me, everyone. That was lovely.
Is your mind going to be in the picture?
Can you hear me? Yeah, we're good, we're good. So, a lot of you, I'm looking at a lot of familiar faces, so a lot of you already know about us. I wanted to talk to you about the new place that we moved into, actually, this week. But the first slides tell you a little bit about our history. Are you interested in me still running through our history a little bit?
If you want to make it quick?
I will make it super quick.
Cool.
Okay, shoot. So I'm Pamela Martin, I'm the director and founder of Expressive Path. Who has the thing?
Heather Lewis.
Okay. So the slide you just went by was like about the various classes that we've offered over the years. This is who we're comprised of, I put that in to show that we're growing. We now have an education director and I'm an assistant and 22 teachers. So we are a nonprofit, we're in Montgomery County, but we are reaching other counties like Philadelphia County and Chester, Delaware as well. We work with students that are 12 to 19 in middle and high school that are low income or fit another type of eligibility criteria. We're incorporated 2014, but we started services in 2015. We're historically mobile, meaning we're going out into the community to do creative art workshops with disadvantaged teens, mostly Norristown-focused. A lot of our work is in Norristown Area School District, but we also do community workshops and collaborative workshops with a lot of nonprofits and also a lot of collaborative projects. So for example, I know a lot of you here are familiar with the Trail Junction. Well, we just did a beautification project down there where we did a mural and bike sculptures and stepping stones. So we're always working with other organizations because we think it's really important to do collaborative work, it builds strength in the community. We have about 12 teaching sites, most of them are in Norristown School District. Just some of the eligibility criteria, you're going to see Norristown School District in there. They're always eligible, I have a really strong place in my heart for Norristown Area School District. My son did go to Norristown, so that's a big part of it, but just, I love being a part of the Norristown family and watching it grow and working with the other organizations. And also, the teachers and the principals, counselors are just phenomenal and I think that word really needs to get out. We have four programs, art education, which is tours, lectures, scholarships. Our mentorship program is what I was talking about earlier, where we're going into the schools and we're doing a bunch of different creative art workshops like dance, singing, printmaking, poetry, more. Self-expression is we go out into the community, once the students have learned something in the artistic realm, they can do a performance. A lot of you know Art in the Park, they perform there. And, you know, they get an opportunity to do shadowing and networking. And what I'm really excited to talk about, which I think a lot of you don't know about, is we have a new program on Friday nights, it's at Lincoln Academy in Audubon, it's called Community Creators. And what we're doing there is a social group with a creative arts element. It's every Friday night, it's from 6:00 to 9:00. Students come in, they do an activity, they get a free dinner, and then somebody from the community comes in and does a workshop. So for example, Montgomery County Community College came in and did Design Your Own Guitar. And we had two comics book founders come in and teach the students how to do their own superhero, to draw their own superhero. So every Friday night, somebody from the community comes and we would love to have one of you as a guest. I already talked a little bit about our mentorship program. They're usually about six sessions long, one to two hours, and sometimes they last a bit longer, but that's what we're going into the schools and doing. We've had some STEAM programs that have lasted months and months and months where we've been working with the middle schoolers in Norristown School District and so forth to teach them about STEAM, which is basically the A for Art in STEM. We have a component called the Tools for Success, so our students can earn what they're learning. So if they are learning guitar, they have a little mini contract with their teachers where they can earn their guitar, or they can earn the art supplies so they can continue to craft, because lots of times these students are learning things, but then they don't have the supplies and the means at home to be able to continue. This is just a quotes and impacts section, we don't have to go through all of it, but this is a chat that I actually ever heard, you can read, where a student had said, you know, this really has had a huge impact for them and it's, you know, a place that they feel like they can be themselves, so, yeah. More quotes. Community service student, a lot of folks don't know that we do have a community service component, so students that are in need of community service hours for either academic or for, they did something not so academic, they can come to us and we help give them their hours that they need, but we don't just have them like clean and do that kind of thing, we have them work with other students, help with projects, work on databases, we try to give them skills that they can use going out and forward. And this is just a picture of some of the kids. Self-expression program is the opportunity to go into the community after they've learned something and exhibit their craft. And this is an example of one of our students who actually got to perform at Citizens Bank. And we received an award from the Phillies and they asked us to come down and perform for them, and they said, bring your band. We didn't have a band, so we created a band, we called it the EP for Expressive Path House Band, and he was one of the students. And they just, I mean, who wouldn't want to play at Citizens Bank Park, so that was super cool. Every year we have an annual art exhibition, some of you I'm sure remember, we were at Municipal Hall one year. We have a theme every year that promotes character, this year it's advocacy. And on Monday, we're going to John J. Audubon Center, this trip is going to be super cool. We are taking the kids to the center, they're going to, it's about 50 students, they're going to get to go to the Education Center, and then after they come out of the Education Center, they're going to get binoculars and they're going to take a tour, like a nature hike. And then after they do that, they're going to get to do plein air painting, so they're going to get a pack of different art supplies so that they can paint from nature. And then after the whole thing is finished, we'll go back again in May and there'll be a show in their historic barn, so that's our annual exhibit this year. Just pictures of some of the exhibits. That's when we were at Municipal Hall, the old Municipal Hall, Pottstown Montgomery County Community College, that was their gallery. And whenever we do an opening, the students get to do open mics and make new art and make friends. Some of the students. We were at Woodmere Art Museum for one of these annual exhibits. Art education is tours and lectures and further education, we do an annual scholarship. And we do presenters, so this is a children's book illustrator that did a virtual class for our students. Our annual scholarship in memory of my parents. And two of the recipients, very proud, Norristown. So I talked about Community Creators already, and here's some of the students working. So, I mean, it really is fun, and what's really great is a lot of these students don't have great social skills and they're just, they're scared to make new friends, and so they're really making friends there and they're coming out of their shells and it's becoming like a little family, it's nice. So every year we do a free camp, and now that we've moved, we're going to do it there. It's two weeks long, one week is art, one week is music, it's from 9 to 2 every day. And we do breakfast and lunch and, you know, art and music. And we have cool teachers come in and do, you know, neat projects, it's not like popsicle stick art or anything like that, it's not crafty, it's generally, generally art, so, sorry. And here's tie-dyes that we made. Every year we have two major events, one's our Spring Fling, that is April 28th, it's coming up, tickets are still for sale, and our students will come perform there. And then Art in the Park, which is at the zoo, and our students perform there as well. So Art in the Park. Some of the other events that we're in, we can't say no every time somebody asks us, we end up there. Okay, so what I really wanted to talk to you about was the Expressive Path Creative Arts Center. And so we were at the theater in Norristown and also Monaco Saks, we were two different places, and that was really challenging because our inventory was in one place and we were at the other place. So we moved them together and now we're at A57 Cherry Street. So this is what the inside looks like, the first floor and the basement, in the basement we have all our inventory and the first floor, that's where we'll do our work, and then the outside. So you can see it needs a lot of work and love, and so we are, you know, working and getting support for that, we wanted you to see what we're doing. And so this is one of the pictures of what it's going to, you know, hopefully eventually look like, we want windows and all the, through the building and on the side, it needs windows, I mean, we're artists, we need light in there and the students need light. And then the inside, we want to put in a lighting system, we want security system outside. I already did meet a couple of the neighbors and I got a lot of interesting stories, and so we definitely want a security system on the side and we want to, you know, put lights outside. But the, if you could go back to the one slide? No. No, not, keep, forward, sorry. Yeah, so, now back one. So the wall where you see the little like squares and lights, that's going to be a gallery wall, and we want to do track lighting and hanging system. And the place is not just going to be for our students, it's going to be for their families. We want to do cultural events, we want to do community events, we want to get the whole town involved and the whole, the whole street involved in that area. And the best thing about being on Cherry Street is that our students can walk, a lot of our students live in that area where they can walk to us. And that's what the backyard will look like. We are working with Habitat for Humanity on Rock the Block on April 29th, and they're going to come help us get started with that new appearance. Okay, so now that we'll be moving into A57, we'll be able to do in-house workshops, we'll have our free summer camp there, we'll have our exhibits there. The thought is it will be accessible for our students to walk there, and like I told you about, cultural opportunities, community events, storytelling, we'll have local artists come and speakers, and we feel that it'll bring visitors to the area and to that, to come see us. And the streetscape, it'll, we'll help clean up the streetscape and, you know, restoring the building, the curb appeal, we hope we'll get neighbor support, interest, volunteerism, increase safety in the area. And art attracts, it boosts economy, bridges gaps, educates, inspires, and like I said, it brings visitors. And your support means so much, so we're looking to partner, we heard about a lot of grants, we'd like to be considered for community grants and, you know, recreation support We have an open house on May 18th from 11:00 to 1:00, and you're welcome to come, so. And we always could use, use any donations, supplies for art and also music, and thank you. I'm sorry.
I apologize for being late, but hello. So what's the outside of the building going to look like as far as color scheme, because you guys are artists, so I'm expecting that it's going to be bright and colorful and inviting where people will be like, oh, what's this place?
We would like that, we would like to have, you know, flower boxes and, actually, we're thinking about having the outside of the building maybe just be a solid color, but in the back, there's concrete walls where we'd like to do murals, and we already have permission from the neighbor behind us to do that. It is not, we do not own the building, but our landlord is like totally behind us, any sort of beautification effort we want to do, any construction, he's like all for it. And again, the next door neighbor is the same way. So, yes, there'll be picnic tables and colored umbrellas and murals in the back, and in the front, flowers and planners and windows and hopefully some sort of appealing color scheme. Good question, thank you.
Go forward to it.
Yeah.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate your time.
Madam President, any announcements?
Yes, so we have Restorative Norristown or Norristown Restorative Cities, it's a restorative justice training happening this Saturday at the Norristown Library from 9:30 to 4:30, so it's an introduction to the restorative justice practice and restorative circles, it's an alternative to policing and, Bishop, you're familiar with restorative justice, so it's an opportunity to redirect kids into a different path where the community can kind of help them get on the right path. I'm a member of that organization, so. And Yvonne Plasse is in the, in the building tonight, so if you have any questions, you can ask her about restorative circles, but that'll be this Saturday at the library. And the Carver Center has some things, I don't have it pulled up right now, I know they're having movie night tomorrow night from 6:30 to 8:30, and a couple other free events for the rest of the week while the kids are out on break, so check out the Carver Center.
Does any member of council have any other announcements?
Thank you. Madam Secretary, public comment?
Jim Walter, Waters?
Hi, everybody.
Jimmy.
Hello. Sherri Holmes is doing a cleanup to help sanitize Tent City, that's going to be April 14th at Horace Avenue, sounded like she's got a bunch of people. Robin Parker would have been here tonight, but we couldn't coordinate her wheelchair. She wanted to talk about adaptive sports with amputees, and also, there's no parking for boat trailers at Riverfront Park. Aggressive drivers, five stars, I'd like to help with that. Shame on you, Norristown, 2008, I had sent to Kevin and I hope you all had a chance to look at it. What that basically does is it features a house that has been boarded up for a quarter of century. And the idea is, I'm going to look into this and see why that happened, because I think there's something in the ordinance that says you're only allowed to board up houses for three months. But I'm taking this to the school board because I kind of think that what happened to these people was the underfunding of schools, pricing them out. I'm kind of confused as to how I can ask questions, I know this is comment, but I was thinking that it's either the sunshine law or, you know, there's no time for discussion about these issues, as a veteran, 75 years old, I'm thinking that there's something that, you know, you can do with some of this stuff that I see while I'm riding around. Dereregulation, we talked about, the train wreck. They're trying to come up with laws that make up for the 1980 SAG Rail Act, and, oh, there's, there's a bill that I'm going to see if I can do something about. And I have been sending information to COVID so that we can maybe address some of the stuff that, I mean, I ride around with, you know, with the phone company, so, you know, I've got a good memory of what went on for the past 50 years around here. The last thing is phone scams. Now, the sheriff issued a scam alert, calls, requests money to dismiss arrest warrants, and he's got a really mean picture here. I'm a veteran.
So am I.
All right, I think that's it. Buttonwood, what's that?
So am I.
Yeah.
Hey. Sorry.
No, I'm just a PFC or whatever. The other thing was, is that Mr. Jones, I had a chance to talk to him about what was going on at Buttonwood Street, in fact, he even said something, wires are hanging in his backyard, I don't want to know where he lived though, because I'll make friends with him, I read the book. Public Works is making a, a good attempt to take care of the mess that's there, 700 block of Buttonwood Street, you know where the cables are all laying on the ground? I'm sure you've seen my pictures, haven't you? Well anyhow, in order to stress this a little bit more, I'm thinking about doing another shame on you, Norristown, where I ride around showing things that most people should be looking at, but I'm not sure what music to use it for, the one I know of was the Irish White Band Pick Up the Pieces.
Thank you very much, Mr. Waters.
It was really, all right, I gotta go.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Vincent DePaul?
Follow that, Vinnie. Good evening, everybody. My name is Vincent DePaul. Shoot, I don't even know where to begin. I have a ministry called God Feeds Ministry, I've been in the vegan restaurant business for over 10 years, started Gangster Vegan in West Norton. I just got a building literally across the street from here, I'm renting out, it's 201 Swede Street, and I was going to do a nonprofit restaurant, more ministry-type driven, I have a street ministry where we feed people healthy food, our mission is to transform and improve the quality of life worldwide, one fruit and vegetable at a time. I started in Norristown about 10 years ago, feeding inner-city children, feeding low-income families, giving out free produce, probably giving out over 100,000 free healthy vegan meals, juices, smoothies. And I got this building about seven months ago, I'm paying rent on it, and I've come here tonight to ask for some support, I need support, I really need some love, it seems like I get love all over the world, people sow seeds into my ministry online, all over the world, but when it comes to Norristown, specifically in downtown Norristown, I'm not, I'm not getting that love, I'm not feeling that love. And I'm at a roadblock as far as what to do with this building, I don't have big cooking equipment, I just need the sinks in there, a little bit of electric, the counter, you know, it's not a $100,000 build-up, but the borough is acting like it's a $100,000 build-up. I just got a quote from an architect for $12,000, I'm not, I'm not building a mansion here, you know, I just want to get it to code, I really want to beautify this building, my landlords are very familiar with the work I do, they've been very lean, they've been looking out, we want to beautify the outside of this building, get the kitchen in there so we can start feeding people. Right now, it's a street ministry, we're on the street, we're at the transportation center, we're in Kensington, we're all over, just feeding healthy meals, giving low-income families, children and homeless people nourishment, we believe that they should have nourishment, just because they're on the street, we don't have to give them junk food. It's a very strong ministry, it's a God-driven ministry, I call it ministry, but it's a restaurant as well, and I'm at, I'm at a roadblock with it, you know, I don't have millions of dollars, I don't have, you know, it's a very new business, it's a new ministry, I don't have all the credentials to get all these grant money, that everybody's getting grant money and grant money and grant money, I'm not even asking for the money, I'm just asking for help with the, the roadblocks, you know, it's like, the lady came in with the clipboard of all the, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't, you gotta, you know, but it was no support of, here's a resource, here, here, you know, and...
Thank you, Vinnie, I want to connect you with Mr. Singh here, see if he can help you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all. That's all.
Is there anybody else in the crowd that would like to make a public comment?
Hi, Jenny Cho, 503 Barbado Street. I was just wondering about the bridge, it's kind of dark there, kind of creepy, can there be some more lighting or even a camera? I don't know.
This is a public comment, it's not a question and answer forum.
Oh, okay.
The bridge, I would imagine, Erie Street Bridge is what you're going to say about, chief, well, that's kind of what I discussed with you earlier, we'll get there. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to appointments, resolution 23-24.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, you have before you resolution 23-24, which is to fill various positions on various boards. The first is a civil service commission, the appointment of Jenna Lyons for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. This is an appointment as an alternate that's actually replacing Councilmember Lauren Hughes, who was, was serving as an alternate. The second is Human Relations Commission, Terrence Barnes with a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Recreation Committee, Mary Kraus, term expiring December 31st, 2027. Sherri KeHo Rogers, term expiring, expiring December 31st, 2026. And the final appointments are to keep Norristown beautiful. Olivia Brady, reappointment with a term expiring December 31st, 2024, and Rebecca Smith with a term expiring December 31st, 2024.
Just have a correction with Cheryl instead of Sherri.
Sherri, okay. Cheryl?
Cheryl.
Okay.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution 23-24?
Second.
Motion? Second. Madam Secretary, can I roll call?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, the ayes have it, resolution passes, thank you, Mr. Jones. Moving on to police, resolution 23-22, request for counsel to approve the promotion of Officer Michael... Schwan Yay. Say that again? Schwan Yay. Schwan Yay. To police corporal. Counsel, before you use the resolution 23-22 to authorize the promotion of Officer Michael Schwan Yay to police corporal, a little backstory, Sergeant William Tims, who's been with us for 38 years, is retiring as of May 10th of this year, and at this point, we, our current promotion list expires April 12th, so we want to get one more person in line for midnight shift for supervision to try and cut down on the overtime and have people covering. Officer Schwan Yay has been with Norristown Police for nine years, he's with North Wales Borough for a year before that, he is on our SWAT team, he has been one of our defensive tactics instructors, and actually, one of his hobbies is jujitsu, and I believe he's a brown belt now? Purple. So he's working toward a black belt in jujitsu, which helps with our defensive tactics instructor. He's also got a bachelor's degree from Quistown University where he served as the captain for the varsity men's soccer team while he was there. Hobbies are jujitsu, hunting, fishing, spending time with his wife Allison and their three German shepherds. Three? Thank you. Counsel, any questions, comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution 23-22?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, yes, ayes have it, resolution passes, do the administration vote? I, Michael Schwan Yay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And that I will enforce the laws of this Commonwealth.
That I will enforce the laws of this Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Norristown.
And the ordinances of Norristown.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
As a police corporal.
As a police corporal.
For the municipality of Norristown Police Department.
For the municipality of Norristown Police Department.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I will uphold, obey and enforce.
That I will uphold, obey and enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color, sex... Color, sex, religious creed.
Color, sex, religious creed.
Sexual orientation, age.
Sexual orientation, age.
National origin, ancestry.
National origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations, Corporal.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to Fire. Chief O'Donnell, presentation of your award to firefighters.
Mr. President, Municipal Counsel, we do have awards to talk about. Mr. President, wherever you want to present them and read the plaques.
Let me go read the plaques. This is initiation. Unfortunately, firefighter McIntyre could not be with us tonight, so we have firefighter Murphy and firefighter Scott. Thank you. A few important things to note. It's the smallest font ever.
No, wait a minute. The Municipality of Narstown, unit citation, Narstown Fire Department, Quint 27, A Platoon. Firefighter Andrew McIntyre, firefighter Charles Scott, firefighter Kevin Murphy. Whereas, on Monday, January ninth, 2023, at nineteen thirty-two hours, the Narstown Fire Department was dispatched for a water rescue at Crawford Park near Water Street. Reports indicated that a woman was in the water and screaming for help. Upon arrival of the fire department, Narstown Police directed the firefighters to the Stony Creek, where the victim was found, face down in the water and unconscious. And whereas, at the time of the incident, the temperature was thirty-eight degrees and the water temperature was forty-seven degrees. The victim was in a deep-water portion of the creek, seventy feet from the firefighter's position. The area was dark and access to the creek required a vertical climb down a near-vertical twelve-foot embankment. And whereas, upon arrival at the scene, the above-mentioned firefighters from Quint 27 quickly and without consideration for their own needs entered the cold water to effect the rescue of the victim. The rescue required the firefighters from Quint 27 to work in a coordinated manner to traverse down the embankment, swim seventy feet through obstacles to the victim, and then return to the entry point. Upon return, additional firefighters assisted with moving the victim from the water. Once out of the water, the firefighters from Quint 27 assisted with CPR until the victim was transported to the hospital. And now therefore, be it resolved that on this date, April fourth, 2023, firefighters Andrew McIntyre, Charles Scott, and Kevin Murphy be recognized with the Narstown Fire Department's unit citation for their collective efforts in performing as a team in outstanding and superior manner. Their collective effort is in keeping with the highest traditions of the fire service and reflects a great credit upon themselves and the Narstown Fire Department. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you all. Move on to Resolution 23-21.
Thank you, Mr. President. Municipal Counsel, before you receive this Resolution 23-21, authorizing the sale of two fire department vehicles that are currently in service, but will be replaced shortly with a new vehicle that Municipal Counsel approved last year. So when that new single vehicle arrives, we will combine those two apparatus onto one brand-new unit. Therefore, we're requesting permission to sell the two current vehicles.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-21?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPaire?
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution passes. Thank you, Chief. Building in codes, Historical Architectural Review Board of March 2023.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, before you, it's a request to approve or deny the Historical Architectural Review Board applications, which were received, reviewed, and recommended for approval by HARB for March 2023. As you all know, the North Sun HARB receives applications on a monthly basis for exterior repairs and renovations for their properties, for properties located in the North Sun Historic Districts. Those applications are reviewed by the HARB members to confirm that the repair or renovation worth proposed is in compliance with our municipal code. The Historical Architectural Review Board has received the applications and have approved either as submitted or modified a certificate of appropriateness for the following two properties, 503 Barbado Street and 120 Marshall Street. It is recommended that Municipal Counsel please approve the HARB COAs as recommended. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the HARB Board of March 2023?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPaire?
Aye. The ayes have it. Motion passes.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, ordinance 23-03.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, ordinance 23-03 is a request of counsel to approve advertising of a franchise renewal agreement with Comcast. As you recall, we just recently did the same thing for Verizon. The same firm, the Cohen Law Group, has represented the municipality in conjunction with a group of other municipalities in Montgomery County in negotiating this franchise renewal agreement. Just the high points of it, as with the last one, five percent of the gross receipts of the cable operator will come, their gross revenues will now come as franchise fees to us. One of the additions we made in terms of this negotiation was that there were additional revenue sources that hadn't previously been involved in these, such as bundling. So for phone service, internet service, and all of that, in prior years, that had not been calculated, but in this agreement, it will be calculated. So in all, there'll be about twenty-five different revenue sources available as a result. Like with the Verizon agreement, there also is a grant funding agreement as a part of this. Verizon was about twenty-one thousand dollars. This is actually forty-two thousand dollars. The first half of it will be paid within ninety days of signing of the final agreement. And the second half will come at the five-year mark of the agreement. And also, the agreement allows for us to, again, receive free cable services for municipal facilities. The length of this agreement is for ten years, as was the prior one. And we can also, if there is a problem, we do have an opportunity to get into an agreement with a competitor that's offering more favorable terms that provides the municipality with greater control in the relationship.
They can't get out of this agreement, though, can they?
No, they would have to give us ample notice, like everybody else, so they couldn't do it as a, just we drop it. Yes.
Counsel, any questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number 23-03?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPaire?
Aye. The ayes have it. Order passes. Mr. Jones, the Municipality of Narstown Flex Schedule Pilot Program.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, this is more of a commercial than anything else. And this is actually, in follow-up to, council commissioned an employee satisfaction survey a few months back. And we certainly looked at the results of that survey in terms of looking at what, you know, employees felt with their needs and the things they liked about working for the municipality. And of course, more money is one of those standard things. But like most governments, we can't compete with the private sector in terms of dollars. So one of the things we're looking at doing is to offer flex time as an alternative. And so what I'm doing tonight is really for your information, to share with you that we're gonna start a flex time pilot program. And just some information in terms of what's happened in the last few years since COVID, since COVID came and passed, in terms of the number of folks who've left their positions. And there's been an increase over that time also in the number of people who left government jobs, both at state and local level. In local government, almost a million jobs, nine-hundred-twenty-eight thousand, have been lost. And it's the rate in terms of people applying for local government jobs has also dropped by thirty-two percent. So all the reasons, as you know, COVID fatigue, retirement of baby boomers, desire for better pay, work-life balance issues, which also contribute to employee morale issues are part of the equation as well. So what we're looking to do with this is do two things. One, provide a flex time schedule for employees so that they really can start taking care and give them some better quality of life, taking care of personal matters and other things that they can't do. And so we try to do this through a flex schedule and/or a compressed work week opportunities. And so I spoke to this a little bit earlier, so I don't wanna belabor it. But again, because we can't compete with local government, and we don't have the luxury, I mean, with private sector, we don't have the luxury of local government if we have a shortage of employees. People get burned out, which means that the folks who are still here have to do more, and which contributes to the whole issue of burnout, low morale, et cetera. Again, all of the HR studies have shown that flex time and flexible schedules help increase employee satisfaction, job satisfaction, and retention of good employees. And so this is one of those goals that we have with doing that. And the last point here is that eighty-one percent of employees said that they would be more loyal to the employees if they had regular, flexible work schedules. Here's a list of the benefits to employees in terms of what flex schedules would do for the organization. There's also benefits for the municipality. The cost of recruiting, refilling positions is pretty high when you start talking about the overtime for folks who can't show up, cost of advertising, the interviews, all of that. So if we can maintain and keep the great employees, it does benefit the municipality. So the challenges is that, again, you know, no flex schedule can meet a hundred percent of work demands, and we understand that. You also have to look at, and part of what we've done in terms of even evaluating whether we're gonna do this, is looking at making sure that we have sufficient office coverage, making sure that we have mechanism in place that we can maintain communication with staff as needed on flex time. Implementation costs, it's not gonna be a high cost, really a cost at all for us in terms of implementation, other than maybe adding fifteen-minute additional break period for staff because of the flex scheduling. And then the other part of it is managing performance in terms of those folks who, as they're in their flex pitch. Most of ours, particularly in this pilot, is not about remote work. It's really about flex schedules. So all of the work will be in-house and in the municipality. So that's not so much an issue. So what we decided to do is let's start it with the finance department. And really, you know, what the benefit of doing that, not only for the employees, as we said, but for the municipality, is to expand the hours of operations. So we'll still be five days a week, but we'll now expand our hours from eight AM to six PM Monday through Thursday. On Fridays, we'll be normal, eight-thirty to four-thirty. And we see from what's been happening is that folks are usually there waiting before we open the doors. So this gives those folks an opportunity to get served. And then there are folks who always come after we've closed, wanting to do business as well. So increasing that. Employees are gonna be able to cover these schedules. On Monday to Thursday, we'll have seven-thirty AM to six PM coverage, which would be a ten-hour, ten-point-five-hour days and nine-hour shifts. And then on Friday, we'll have our normal eight-hour day. This will result in that a half of the staff will be off every Friday with this, but we'll still have full coverage to conduct all of the business. There's been great cross-training in the finance department, so that's not gonna be a problem. Supervising will be on our staff at all times. As I mentioned earlier, on those nine-hour days, employees will be provided with an extra fifteen-minute break, so that because of the extra time, any PTO that would be, that they will get will be based on the eight-hour schedule and, I'm sorry, on the number of hours scheduled rather than on the number of days. And then when a holiday falls Monday to Thursday, employees will have the option of using the PTO for the entire time or making up the time within the same pay period. Because now we're getting into a good point in the tax season and billing season, we're looking to do this beginning of April tenth. I think finance is ready. The team is all excited about being able to try. If this is successful with this group, then we're gonna look at other groups who start talking the codes. We'll be looking at other groups where it makes sense to do this. There's no action. I'm asking of counsel at this point. Once we get through the pilots, I mean, evaluate how successful it'd be, we'll probably come back. We'll definitely come back if we wanna do it and ask counsel to pass a resolution that really commits the municipality to be in a flex time organization, which will also help with our recruiting. So that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel, any questions? So for finance, I'm guessing that there's no municipal employee union involved?
Well, we talked with the union, there's some Ask Me folks in, in, in the, so we talked with them, that's part of what we're working on with the extra break and everything.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and we'll definitely talk with every union when we, if we have to deal with it.
And Tommy, this don't work for firefighters, sorry, buddy.
Thanks.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Group in order to Planning Municipal Development, Ms. Massagnier, request for counsel to approve for intent to award construction contract to the Main Street, Streetscape.
Thank you, Council President. After many years of looking for funding to continue the Streetscape project, and after council's wise move at this time to move some of the funding from CDBG to make this a reality, we're finally going to start this phase if you approve this intent to award. Just for the record, the award would be for seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And this is actually a mixture of the multi-modal funding as well as CDBG funding. And this is to the contractor Marina Corporation, which is located in Skypark, Pennsylvania. And as I mentioned, this is for Phase Four of the Main Street Streetscape. The project was bid out and advertised on March third and March tenth of twenty-twenty-three. The budget for the project is eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifteen, which, as I mentioned, only consists of the two funding sources. A total of six bids were received and evaluated by our engineers on March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. If you recall, last year we went out and it came in too high, that's why we had to come back. Anyhow, five of the bids, when you add up with the alternate, the alternate is actually the intersection of DeKalb and Main, that has its own pattern, so we had it as an alternate. The base bid is basically doing the sidewalk, replacing sidewalks, curbs, tree, having trees, lights, and, and that type of improvements. Five of the bids, if you include it as an intersection, were too high. But as you recall, the CDBG money is on a time limit, so we need to move it ahead. So we're recommending counsel approve this award, intent to award, so that we're able to get the project working and we're able to expand especially half of that money so that we're not in trouble with it and it's, it goes to good use. So I'm asking tonight that you please approve the intent to award, and we'll come back after the engineer and the solicitors that have done the review of the bids, make sure we're on up and up with them, and all the, the particulars of the contract are also verified. And that gives us the opportunity to do that, and then when we come back, we'll ask you to award it. But that's what we're here tonight to allow, to allow us to move with the intent to award.
Counsel, any questions?
Just curious, how many phases are in this?
Well, this is Phase Four. We've been doing this for the last, I hate to say, about fifteen years. What you see, actually, Panda helped us a little bit from Markley Street going east. If you notice, most of the sidewalks have been improved. When we get funding, we prove about a block or two, so we've been going incrementally like that. And this last phase, it took us a little while to kind of gather as much as we could to, to actually, it's not the last phase, actually, it's the second last phase. There's one more phase, which is from Arch Street, and we hope to go all the way to Walnut Street. Okay?
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the award for construction to Marina Corp?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Passes, thank you. Mr. Odenaboe, approval of resolution for surplus municipal property to be offered for public auction.
With me in council, this is to get an approval from council to auction some surplus vehicles that we have, and through municipal, through municipal bid, these vehicles are being replaced, more or less, so, and the council will lose more pay. So it's actually a policy that the administrator had, that as soon as a vehicle is bought, then the old vehicle that we're replacing should be, should, should be replaced, should be sold. So that's what we're doing here.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve the resolution for surplus municipal property to be auctioned off.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, the ayes have it. Prove of passes.
Departmental reports go into planning, Ms. Massagnier.
Thank you, counsel. Please. I forgot my. Counsel, thank you again for giving me the opportunity to present you some updates. If you recall, I had mentioned that I will come back in April to give you an update on some of the progress. I kept my promise. Now, I, I will be just five minutes, unfortunately, but that's development, it tends to be a little slow sometimes. Well, the great news is, the conveyance, of course, was completed for the state hospital. You have brand-new ownership of sixty-eight acres, it's been cleared except for one building. We're out on a request for proposals through the redevelopment authority. That request proposal is receiving great interest, we've been told, there's quite a number of tours that are taking place, and the interest is rife of the, in fact, it's so good that we have extended the date when we're expecting the proposals to come in. It was due in April, but we've extended it to August. That's also to be able to answer some questions that developers have been asking that have been very prevalent. In fact, today, the manager and I met with the Pennsylvania Water Department, and the good news is, of course, the water department is staying here, that is an area that was already equipped before, was when there were uses there. So in as much as that might be the case, they also have a good incentive. They won't be looking at tap and fees per se, so they are pro-development in that sense. So that, that was good news. So we're looking forward to that. So the, oh, before I go further, the Bear Building, we're all wondering where we are, well, they're continuing with the improvements. There's one change, if you recall, they had the E sports, and they had the barbecue and all those uses and seventeen apartments. Well, as far as the uses, one of the uses changed, still a tavern, for lack of a better word, a bar, but this one actually will include the axe-throwing, and it went to the zoning hearing board and received approval. One had the axe-throwing and alcohol, but anyway, I don't know if the new stuff, but apparently it's doing pretty well.
We even did it with school board.
We did it, yeah.
Yeah. Nobody got hurt.
Nobody got hurt? All right, I must be, I have to get on top of this, but anyhow, I was kind of surprised that, of course, the board is on top of it, therefore they gave them permission, that's continuing. Do expect them to come in front of you within, hopefully, the next month or so, just to give you an idea of what it is they're trying to do. And they may be coming for a few asks. For instance, they might be asking for a space on Main Street before loading, or the case for them may be asking for some parking spaces at the lot, at the lot near Five Saints, and a couple of other things, they're looking at even dining on the sidewalks, which I think is a great idea, just to keep the whole place a la carte well. So that's moving ahead. I go too far? No, I think I'm good. So the next is Elwood Park Zoo, as you're aware, you approved the phasing of the plan, and they came in with a welcome center. And they are actually, in as much as they are renting some office really next door to us, it's kind of strange having the zoo next door to us, but anyway, they're starting to move back, so that is well underway. I know the engineers are working closely with them to make sure that the escrows or the public improvements are in place, but that's on its way. That's a positive thing, of course. Next, I know I heard some questions about this, and it was known as Benjamin Court before, but now it's Isaac Court, so I guess one son didn't win out, I guess the other son got it or whatever, Isaac Court and not Benjamin. So anyway, we, we knew it as Two Hundred East Logan, and if you recall, there are thirty dwellers that are proposed there, they're underway, the pictures that you're seeing below are the pictures as it is today. They are actually selling for anywhere between three hundred and seventy-four thousand and with upgrades up to four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. So who said property values are not going up in Norristown? The development pays in Norristown, and this is a good sample. As we go ahead, we have the justice center, I wanted to show you, they're, they're moving rapidly, as you can see with the, the top picture of that, the upright. And I know our code and building is keeping a close look on that, as we all recall, Main Street was closed for a while, so they are moving and moving fast. It's not a stalled product, we're happy about that, because the interest is increasing around that area because you see it. So that's, that's a good thing, helps us with marketing downtown. Kennedy Hendrick, as you're all aware, Kennedy Hendrick came and asked for phasing the plan. She should be coming two weeks from now for the Phase One, but she's still intending, that is, the developers that are, but she's still intending to break ground this, this break, and that's still on, on, on schedule. As you can see below, of course, that's, I need to make this clear, that's not the development work, that is Panda still doing the expansion of this intersection, but she had to coordinate with them. And luckily, that's not causing issues, but she'll be able to deliver a Phase One, or rather break ground as she had promised you. And when she comes, of course, two weeks from now, you can ask her again, just to make sure that's the case. All right? We all also know that, finally, Markley Street's reconstruction phase two is complete, and we're happy about that. It took a little too long, as we know, the delay that, was it a year and almost two years, but it finally is where it's supposed to be, it's opened up again for other, yeah, we'll have a bit of interest in the area. So for a while, there wasn't as much interest. Now that it's open, there's interest in properties around there, I fielded about six calls from various developers, and hopefully they'll turn into good materialized. As we go further, some of you may not realize, but the homes that were built, infill homes that were built at fifteen and seventeen East Finance, I've actually, a couple of people said they cashed by then, they didn't see anything new. I find that very strange, but they, they look new to me.
That design review board is doing hell of a job.
Yeah, but I found that a kind of odd, I said, I think you need to go back there and take a look at the two new houses there. They are asking for four hundred and twelve thousand, I think the building manager told me they started asking for about four nineteen, but as we all know, the economy is starting to slow down, but they're still looking for four hundred and twelve thousand, and I don't know what other upgrades. But again, it's just to demonstrate value, value is there. And for those who are in the housing market know what I'm talking about, I think Councilwoman Rebecca and, so they're, they're experiencing the pain of trying to buy a house in Norristown, but on our part, as planners, we're exceedingly happy to see that values are holding and that the risk of a building in Norristown is not as risky as it was rumored for so many years. Anyway, that's all I have for you today, but I will be back again in about two months, hopefully I'll give you more. Thank you again.
Is that the Panda Dome store?
You know, it's a council microphone, dressing up. So, uh-oh. My update this evening is gonna be the, we, I held an open meeting. Start with this one, and then I just click. Where's your phone? Okay, cool. I did hold a meeting, I did hold a town meeting, and we had great families show up. We had a turnout of moms, kids, friends, and it was, it went well. And so what I did was compile, how I ran the meeting was, we are brought up as asked, you know, based on the two parks that are being redeveloped this year, is Bartash, which is back in Norstales area from Lyndaleane, and McCann, which is affectionately known as the cut off of Sandy Hill Road. So these are the bases, how we did it was, I set up easels with the standard template that we have here, just kind of our base equipment that we start with. I also had a pooping passes round, these are just the, just kind of like your rendering of your actual blueprint type of a site. I also had printed out other, some more just bigger close-up renderings of, of different aspects to it. I then also put on each table had, you know, printouts of musical instruments or climbing rock walls, I had different types of water features listed, I had all different pictures to pick from, and to make it easy, we had comment cards and stickers, you put stickers on what you liked, you wrote comments on what you wanted to change, and I think it was the most efficient way to do this, so that even the, like, kids get mobbed, everyone's using it. So these are kind of our main highlights, ADA compliant play surfaces and ramps, rock-climbing wall to be added, play xylophones or drums, seating and benching, fenced-in playgrounds, that was mainly a Bartash, the majority of our community members came was from that neighborhood. McCann, I know everybody thought it was a great update, it's suitable for all ages. Some of the other feedback, as you can see, water fountains, water features such as what MLK has, monkey bars, benches, different soccer and basketball areas, snack stands, parkour courses, so what we, so I kind of pulled out just so we know the pricing and just to get an idea of what those other structures kind of look like. Thank you. So freestyle equipment such as monkey bars, starting at twenty, you know, two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, different types of, so monkey bars, and then the upgraded version is a zip line, and that will be put you up, you know, a couple, about another thousand dollars. Parkour sets, or they like to call them fitness challenge equipment, you can get them in complete sets, which would be its own type of playground equipment. These are three types here, there's one, two, whatever, okay, the third, so these are all different types of, they call fitness challenges or parkour areas, and they, you can pick apart pieces of this, but all sets together are anywhere ranging from twenty-four to forty-four, five. Instruments such as the xylophone, as, you know, when we add this to our playgrounds, we can add it as a standalone, or if you put it, as a standalone, we're starting, as you can see, around five thousand. You can put it on the actual structure as well, if you didn't want it standalone. And when we talked about, a lot of the families really had, they don't like the wood chips, and I totally understood. So your next best type of surfacing, because a lot of them reference the zoo, a lot of them reference Plymouth, Eastern Arton has a new park, Oaks has a new park, they all have a port in place, playground surfacing. Now that is where you get expensive, with, it can even start anywhere as low as eight dollars, as much as twenty-five, so I kind of wrote an example down, you know, a protective area, how big it is. So if we take an average of fifteen So if we take an average of fifteen dollars, your surfacing would be about seventy-seven-thousand. So that's why we kind of start at a wood chip area and build from there, because you always can remove the wood chips, you can add your port in place at a different time or a different phase. So overall, I thought it was, I thought it was great feedback. I mean, that was the first, you know, open community meeting we ran as a recreation department. People were very pleased, they were happy, they were very engaged. I was able to answer questions, and I thought it went pretty well. So this was kind of our highlight reel, per se. Do you have any questions?
Do we have a estimated start time for?
As soon, well, as soon as, yes, we do have a start time, but we resigned it, it'll be the end of May, beginning of June, is the start time for our beginning phase list.
I think one of the things that we want to do is next, at your next meeting, we're going to come back about additional ARPA funds for you to all start, and we'll look at this, and if you guys allocate more money to do it, we'll go ahead and get it done.
How long would something like this take?
So it's your shipping time is your issue. So the manufacturing of products, pretty quickly, it's very, it's local. It is, they are co-stars, they're part of co-stars. So that kind of, that's a state program where we don't have to necessarily offer bids. All of that is covered under there. It is the, it's the time that it takes from placing our order. So we started with our standard equipment, I think it was January, and so that's anywhere from like a five to seven-month pushout. But once we get the equipment in, the installation is up, we get the absolute most. They get in a pretty quickly.
So this one be ready for this summer?
This will be ready for the summer. I have it.
It's ordered for you?
We ordered the base equipment ready back, I think we did it August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's when we had our initial, you guys approved it, to purchase the updated equipment, and then we ordered it earlier this year, and it'll be here for about the next month or so.
So this is like a phased approach, like the basis where we're starting and then growing to this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I guess that's right.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We're going to have something add to the budget here.
I think it is something that, you know, this was an initial CIP before even ARPA was kind of available. So to move forward with it and get it in for this year, we needed our base stuff. And these are all the things that we can add to it, what the community's input was, and, you know, we'll start with those wood chips, but a port in place is an excellent, everybody loves that, you know, surfacing, and it's much more safer, and it's much easier if you do have, it's all-inclusive if you do have any kind of ADA physical requirements needed. So that is just something that, you know, this will be mentioned here in two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, we can add the.
That port in place, isn't, so with the base stuff being in place, does it just kind of pour around it or?
Yeah, so they literally, so it's, if you think of, MLK, they have, they actually have a port in place type of aid. It's like the flat, squishy, gives you some kind of shock absorancy. They come in, it's just rubber that gets poured in.
Lot kind of.
Yeah, and so many depth down for your, you know, landing, whatever, trajectory. But I love, really good words. But they can put, they can, this is, I chose actually this example because you can have patterns, you can have different colors. It doesn't just have to be a plain, you know, standard solid.
Council any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, thanks.